Good evening. The February 13th, 2019 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
May I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Public Meanings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Obstein.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
There are no considerations of ordinances at this time. Ordinance for introduction, this is the first reading of ordinance 1-19 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Long Branch," BYOB. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for February 27th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
My name is Mary Cooper. I've been a crossing cop for 35 years. And I love my job. And I've been going through a lot for many, many years now. Since you have the new people working, my life has been a disaster. And my nerves are shot. I've been in the hospital twice. And now, I've noticed, I got my files. And I want to know how somebody can put stuff in your file without notifying you and put all this garbage in my file. I'm a good crossing guard, I'm an honest person. I've done a lot for the community. And we were told one thing, if you go early, like I go 10 to 7, and as long as you work an hour, you're okay. Then if you have to go to the bathroom, you can go to the bathroom, but you have to make sure your children are gone. And his other crossing guards will verify what I'm saying. Now, I had a meeting, twice. Once with, what's it, the last administrator, and now the new one, Mr. Jackson. He's a very nice guy. But he doesn't know what's going on. But the first time I had a meeting with the prior one, there was only one thing in my file. Now, I got a disaster for the second one, and they're not even, they never brought to my attention. And plus, my days off are ridiculous. So I want some way to get an investigation, how do you say, an investigation or somebody, somebody to look in and help me, because I'm falling apart, because I'm very hurt. Because I would never do anything to jeopardize a child, never. And the same thing with the beach. Mr. Jackson doesn't know, the beach has nothing to do with kids. And Mr. Jackson doesn't know that we were told we can use the bathroom, as long as we don't go home on the beach. So, I go the last day, because it was pouring rain, and if you look at your file, the last day, it was Labor Day weekend, it was pouring, it was raining, there was only two crossing guards working, me and Lisa Maza. I never used the bathroom, never. That day, I left to use the bathroom, I got written up. None of the other crossing guards, they used the CBS bathrooms, she could tell you, none of them got written up. I got written up for one day. And plus, unlike the person that's in charge, always tells everybody, she makes too much money. Am I getting this because she wants me out? I want to know what's going on. I never had this happen to me, and I'm really hurt. I really am hurt. And I just wish somebody would help me, because I'm falling apart. I'm going to have a nervous breakdown, I really am. I'm going to work every day and having somebody check me in every day to protect me, because I only have one more shot and I lose my job with garbage that I didn't even do. Okay? I just need help, I wish you can help me.
Mary, we'll have someone look in.
You know me, all yous know me. And I know yous all see me on my corner. I got changed from Bath Avenue, lost my pay, he cut my pay down, then I went to Westwood Avenue, he stuck me back to Bath Avenue, then he stuck me to 6th, and now I'm at Woodgate. There's something wrong here. He took pictures of me, humiliated me, took pictures of me from the school, okay? I got hit by a city employee. He was more worried about the city employee, because he broke my sign, I'm having, look at my hand, this hand I have no use in, because it hurts so bad. I need something done with my wrist, because the city employee hit me with a chock, and that's why he took me off the corner, because most of the city employees were doing the wrong things, they were going straight when they weren't supposed to. He came straight, he was worried about, he wasn't worried about me, he was worried about the scratch I supposedly put with the sign that he hit. I just want to let you know that. I just, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, maybe I'm not, you know? I just want to let you know, I love my job, and I don't want to lose my job. I wanted to stick it out for another year. I mean, you know, if God willing, if I can do it. All right? I'm sorry, guys.
We'll look into it, Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, I, you know, I've known you, and our families have known each other all our life, you're, you know, you're a great person, and I appreciate that you're here. George, can you come in?
And also, a lot of people are supporting me, because when I'm checking, and there's any response, this is ridiculous, Mary, you've never done anything wrong. I was in charge of the crossing guards for years. I wrote up schedules for the summer. He took my schedule and ripped it up, and gave the lady another schedule, and then the crossing guards went down, because my schedule was destroyed. But I didn't want to hurt a cop, I don't want to hurt nobody. My whole family's a cop, and state trooper. I don't want to hurt nobody. I ain't doing bad doing to anybody. But look what he's doing to me, I'm all apart, I really am, I'm shaking like a leaf here, you know? I need to watch my back, 24/7, because he's always on my, they're always on my corner.
We'll look into it.
And I'm going for you. You can check, John.
Yes, I saw.
I'm sure you're getting it. Look at my, it should be on your thing. Look at your phone, I'm checking in every day. My family's checking in, my daughter's upset about this. She said, Mom, you gotta do something, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have a nervous breakdown.
George, what?
Ms. Cooper, I, we had a meeting.
Were you with the Jackson?
Yes, I am.
Sweetheart.
Thank you.
I missed you, I didn't really like you.
No, no, thank you very much. But with the personnel matter, we really, I can't discuss all the fine details, but I just want to let you know and kind of, you know, recapture some of the things that we had. We had a meeting with your union representative, representative of the police department several weeks ago.
What's your?
Lydia Torres was here with you. And we talked about the issues at hand, the concerns about some things that needed to be addressed with the coverage of your posts. And at the end of that meeting, we came to an agreement about a document that would be presented to you. I forward it to Ms. Torres. If there are other things that have arisen that you think we need to talk about, reach out to her, because she is there to represent you, and we can meet again if that's necessary. We talked about the way we were going to move forward. I can tell you that I have talked to members of the police department about your performance since that meeting. I'm told it's all good. The times that you can't be there, you're doing exactly what we discussed, you're letting the police department know ahead of time, and that was one of the things we discussed. So, I think we're on the right track. If there are new incidents that need to be talked about, we'll talk about those. But do me a favor, and reach out to Lydia, and talk to her about how we had talked about resolving this issue. She's got the document, I've asked her to show it to you and discuss it with you. And we can move forward.
We already spoke to the gentleman that was with me at the store when the officer said I attacked him in the store.
Okay. Those other types of issues, we have to talk about separately.
I spoke to Lydia and told her it was not true. He didn't know that God was with me.
Okay.
So, I'm just telling you, I'm on the run. All this stuff in here, you don't know, but a lot of it's not true. And this is what I didn't want to say to you, that that...
Okay. But you have a union representative, so you ought to take advantage of that.
I got Judge Donnis.
What's that?
I got Judge Donnis. That's not bad.
All right. Well, there's a, there's a way to handle this. You got a union rep, she's paid to represent you, so I suggest...
Get her to come to see you.
Yeah, speak to Lydia. And if we need to meet again, we'll meet again. That's fine.
All right, I appreciate your help.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
Avery Grant, 4005 Atlantic Avenue. I could very, very well vouch for Mary Cooper. She is really the person who believes in her community. And I can't, Saturday mornings, we used to build birdhouses at Woodrow Wilson's, hoped the depot would bring materials. And she had the young people building birdhouses, and we started a boxing thing. And I grabbed hold of John Kaye, I said, John, you got all that drug money, we need some. He gave us $5,000 to put a boxing rig in. So, I can vouch for her, she's very good. We all make mistakes, and I don't know exactly what she's talking about, but if you need somebody to vouch for her character, I'd be happy to do that. And the other thing is that I would like to get some kind of meeting so we can formalize how we respond to Code Blue. I commend the mayor for getting us together, and we worked very well, and you'd be amazed at how many volunteers came out to work with us. And the merchants did. Tuesday, Tuesday provided us with a bad quart of food, I've never seen so much good food in my life. And Fine Fair gave us good food for the breakfast, and I don't know who else. But again, we need to formalize this, and I don't think it has to be placed on, I still call it concordance when I helped found it, that's what he called it, I don't remember what the name of it is now, but Lisa Wilson. I think the city has to take a form of effort to do something. When I was in East Orange, that was part of my emergency management thing, to really care for any problems we had in the community. And we didn't, I hate to say, we didn't let regulations hold us back, but in those days, you know, you had a little liberty. And Essex County, you say Trenton has the power, but Essex County is where the power resides. And you could get anything done you wanted to, if it was for the good of the people. So again, please, we need to get together. Again, I commend the mayor, and we had a real great time. I'm a little drowsy, because we stayed up to midnight, and then other people came, and the police supported us very well with, from midnight to 6:00 in the morning, 12:00 in the morning, they had an officer there. So please, we need to get that formalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you. You enjoyed the food, too. I enjoyed the food.
Is there anyone else?
I expect one minute notification. Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Not a very good evening in the city, not a very good past couple of weeks. Everyone's well-known about an incident involving an officer of LBD. I stated two years ago, that particular officer was quote, "a walking liability to the city," on the public record at a council meeting. In December, I referred to the New Jersey Forest Report, and referred to this officer, who in hereafter will be referred to as the problematic. In the state of New Jersey, on that NJ.com Forest Report, out of 17,000 police officers, he was number five in force. Problematic, in the past year and a half, has had a progressive series of incidents, some remaining suspect to this day. And in the last two weeks, everybody knew what occurred, had a function for the police. Unfortunately, a victim resulted. Separate and apart from the problematic, there's been other members of LBD over the years that have raised some very serious incidents, and the way they were handled is very troubling. With the particular incident that occurred during the past two weeks at the police function, one can only look at the heads of LBD and the civilian directors over the years. The special treatment that the problematic received over the years can easily be viewed as misfeasance on the part of civilian directors, heads of LBD, and particularly the current police chief, Robuck. The fact is, there's been inappropriate action, most recently, by the current police chief in dealing with the problematic on a certain event three and a half weeks ago. This misfeasance has now evolved into malfeasance by a public official in exercising wrongdoing. And in recent incidents, this malfeasance incurs secondary liability on the part of the police chief and the city. The fact is, problematic had incidences and a crime that were foreseeable based upon problematic's past incidences and the crime. The current police chief over the years has abused his power, applying special treatments to the problematic. Those special treatments, again, allowed in the past two weeks for another victim of the problematic. The police chief along with past officials of LBD and directors, past and present governing body officials are not indemnified in matters concerning this problematic, especially in the most recent incident within the past two weeks. One can only respect the privacy of the victim in this trying time, and one can fully understand the victim and the victim's family, properly addressing the damages that have occurred in the proper venues. As far as the damages to our community from a now questionable police force and a questionable police force leadership, the New Jersey State Attorney General has been notified with a request for a full investigation of the operations of the Long Branch Police Department.
Mr., you have one minute.
And to root out the sordid culture which exists. I request other citizens of Long Branch reach out to the State Attorney General office and do likewise. In the meantime, we can only hope the state police come in and start running LBD until such time that the situation in LBD is corrected. With the police force, I've stated this in several meetings, there is no difference between the Schneider team and Team Palone. Only the police department has now gotten worse. Junk government.
Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close the public for...
Could you hold? Hi. I don't sound much better than the last meeting, but maybe you could imagine you're watching some kind of crime movie, and I'm part of a syndicate, but I'm not, so. Ernest McNolly, born in Long Branch, own property and live in Asbury. I started out tonight at the Long Branch High School, at the Asbury High School, there's an important meeting about the removing of the North Boardwalk, doing what happened to our armory where it becomes a private beach club and a private beach. So they're doing that at the north end. So it was important to me to be there. As I'm there, I'm online to speak. I like to come to both, and I realize the line's too long, I'll miss coming here. So it reminds me of the fact that I was born here. I must love this city, too. I was born in Monmouth Hospital, I went to school here, I still go to church here. So, here it is, I left there to come here. And I've asked a lot of people, they said, now come on, you own property there, it's more important. No? Well, it's more important for me now to be here, and I'll tell you why. I concur with everything that Ms. Lapore just said, and more. I like to think, since I'm born here, I even know a little bit more than he knows, and he knows a lot. He's a very fact-based person. I don't always agree with his delivery, but I think what really messed him up is the arrest that took place here, that changed that man's life. He's now ridiculed, maligned, called a kook and all kinds of things. And that's not fair. You know why? Because I sit here now and watch the things that are being mentioned, and you see a chief there, all he does is text, send messages, take pictures of me, send them to his buddies, they Photoshop them, they put them all over Facebook, they say we're all no good, and he just smiles no matter what you say. So, you got yourself a nice Teflon chief who never should have been chief, right? He was only six months in grade as a captain, you're not supposed to put him in office. He had problems with the test, somehow he got the highest score. You know, took the test with him? A lot smarter people, you know? That's a question. But, he remains the same, whether it's Pescucci, or Joyce Jr., or all his friends. How many people in the public know that Jason Robuck worked for Pescucci Senior? A terrible conflict. So when Pescucci Senior is drinking, uh, Junior is drinking with all the cops and firemen and freehold in Eventide Bar in Monmouth Beach, and then they're coming to Jack's Bar in Holy Smokes, and they kill the state trooper's wife, look how they handled it. It's unthinkable. It's as bad as the West End Six, the way they handled that 48 years ago. Remember that? The firemen, the police raping the preacher's daughter in the firehouse? Why do we forget about that? Now, you see the monument outside here. Can you give me a one minute, please?
Clerk?
Sure.
Am I close?
Forty-two seconds.
Total?
Per minute.
Plus a minute?
Yes.
Thank you. So, when you come here, you see the monument out back, it breaks your heart to think that that officer, who I knew, I lived on Second Avenue, okay? I know the whole story, it's heartbreaking. The nation was here, it made national news. There's this monument. Now his brother, who's retired a cop, goes with his daughter to the Long Branch High School to a swear-in, and then after, the problematic goes to the Jack's Bar, where he's a regular, a criminal, he's a criminal at the Headliner Bar, he's a criminal at Jack's, he's a crim... I'm out of time?
One minute.
Oh, thank you. So, he's a criminal, right? Anybody want to deny it? It's in the records, right? Maybe the chief wants to deny it. How about the chief out in Pennsylvania with the problematic, with Shore Regional High School kids? I'm not sure he was there, but I know Lieutenant Shirley was there, and I know Patrick Joyce was there, and I know Shore Regional kids were there, and they were drinking at Raceway Park, and they were putting it on Facebook. Right now, I send all this stuff to the clerk, to forward, and you get it? And isn't it interesting that now the city attorney has moved his seat next to the mayor? What's up with that? Why? Why? You know why? Because you got to try and figure out a way to cover all this stuff. And then, all the stuff in the past, you want to say, huh, it wasn't us? Well, you got elected to fix what's in the past, too. You can't walk away from it. Is that my time?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
President, it's not a comment, but I'd like, I didn't see my pastor here, I'd like to thank him. He opened the church for the homeless as well as St. James. So we've got people in this community that want to help people, so we need a little more leadership from the city to get it all organized. And again, I compliment the mayor for what he did.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. They have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, for the good of the order, I'd like to ask Councilman Dangler, if you have any comments?
Yes, between the last meeting that I was at and this meeting, I had the pleasure to meet with the couple members of the Board of Education, as well as the superintendent of schools, and the mayor was also there, and the chairperson rose with us. It was just to discuss any further tax abatements that would affect the school district in regards to getting their fair share, which has been brought up several times. And we would certainly have more conversation with the superintendent of schools and the Board of Education, if that would be the case. Because we didn't want, we did not want the public to think that we were, tried to shortchange the school district, and, in what they deserve as far as their tax base and what they should get from the city. Also, we discussed briefly, not going into detail, some type of shared services, things that we may be able to do together to save on the, to save on the taxpayers. So, all in all, I thought it was a good meeting, it was the first time that we've done that since we've been held administration here. And we continue, we will continue to have more when it is necessary. So, I thank you, and be safe and keep warm.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
Good evening, and thanks, everybody, for coming. I'm very quiet today, now, just want to thank everybody for coming, that's it. Good night.
Councilwoman Vogt?
Good evening, everybody. Let me give you an update on a project, I'm going to take you back for a little bit to the Hundred Day Plan, if you remember that. And one of the things that we had on it was our very strong commitment to want to do something about the opioid addiction problem, certainly in Long Branch, and certainly around the whole country. And, again, going, going back to when we first got in office, we said, if anybody is interested in working on any of the projects, please just step up. And there were about five of us, I'm going to recognize Gallup for sending an email and saying, yeah, I'd love to, you know, help on this. So, really, I think it was about five of us that started in the beginning, we sat, and Councilman Dangler, you joined us at that, the beginning there? And it was, we were talking about, well, what can we do? What can the administration do to, that's going to make a difference? The mayor took a very strong position on this and endorsed everybody's efforts in trying to address it. So, rather than guess that we knew what the community needed and what people wanted, we spent about, we've been meeting for about two months now. We had a large, what we called a large group meeting, where we had about 30 people from the community who work, who are professionals in the field of addiction. We talked to them, and we said, what, what can be done? We got a whole list of ideas. And after that, we had a second meeting of people in the community who are actually dealing with addiction firsthand, or members of their family, or whatever, however it touches them. And again, it was, what, what can we do? And as a result of those two meetings, we now, we, meaning the mayor, is now ready to officially launch a task force. And the task force is going to be called Long Branch HEARS, H-E-A-R-L-S. Health, Education, Addiction, Recovery, and Support. We're going to be hosting a reception, you'll hear more about this and get more information, on March 25th. It'll be at the Long Branch Center, right here on Broadway. And it'll be a, really, a celebration of the community recognizing the fact that this is an important issue, and the mayor is putting this forward as a task force with the objective, one of the first things that we're going to do is do a directory of services to see where some of the gaps are, and to, after that, to see if, what additional services we might have to bring in. And the second thing that we're going to do, of equal importance to that directory, is address the issue of stigma, and the idea that people may not come forward because of... And the idea that people may not come forward because of stigma. And what are some of our ideas that, and beliefs that we hold that may really hold all of us back from treating this an important issue? We're also talking about having a, using the Long Branch Cable Channel to monthly interview some of the service providers and have discussions about addiction. And again, what can we do to make Long Branch a strong recovery community? So, I just wanted to update you on some of that important work and let you know that you'll be hearing some more about it. That's about it. So, thank you.
And then we have Councilwoman Mary Jane Sally.
All I would like to say is tomorrow is Valentine's Day. And please don't forget your loved ones. That's all.
Mayor Plon?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Councilwoman Vogt, I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you've done and your entire group, actually, with regards to the task force. I have a few announcements I'd like to make. On February 19th, which I believe is next Tuesday, the Long Branch Citizens Police Academy alumni in the city of Long Branch will be hosting a Black History Month Law Enforcement and Community Conversation Forum. This will be held at Brookdale Community College at 213 Broadway, Long Branch. Again, thank you, Dr. Vogt. From 6:30 to 9:00 PM. The Long Branch Police Department, Monmouth County prosecutors, lawyers, and citizens will be in attendance, and light refreshments will be served. The goal of this event is to have a conversation during Black History Month about law enforcement in our community. And all are welcome to attend, so please do. There was a similar event held last year. It was well-attended, and it was very informative. So, please attend that if you could. Tonight on the agenda, the council appointed Nicholas Graviano Employment Resolution. That was passed tonight. Mr. Graviano will start on March 11th for the city. Nick will, most recently, was the Planning Director for the city of Clifton, a city with a population of over eighty-four thousand residents and one of the largest municipalities in the state. Mr. Graviano has a law degree and a master's degree in city and regional planning. He's also a resident of Long Branch. And the city of Long Branch believes that Nick will be a welcomed asset to our department. Nick will serve as our city planner, the director of building and development, and will supervise the Office of Code Enforcement. To everything that Mr. Grant said this evening, I'd like to thank everyone who volunteered at the Warming Center at both St. James Church and St. Luke's Church. A special thank you to the churches for opening their doors, and the Coastal Communities Family Success Center for organizing the volunteers and the shift. Pastor, thank you so much. I'd also like to thank the many volunteers, some of whom are in this room tonight, that took shifts throughout the night, and the businesses and individuals who donated food and supplies. The generosity and response was truly remarkable. We're gonna be having a coffee with the mayor event on February 25th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Oliver Byron Firehouse. We welcome everyone to have a chat while enjoying some refreshments. This is something we talked about once with the Hundred Day Plan, and we tend to have these events periodically throughout the city. Just some other notes. The Long Branch Recreation Junior Cheer Competition Program is back. It's available for girls and boys from grades one through five. The cost is a hundred dollars, and anyone interested can call Recreation at 732-571-6545. The Long Branch Green Team is accepting compost garbage from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM on Wednesdays and Sundays at the Seventh Avenue Community Gardens. That's just across the street from the Anastasia School. Materials they're accepting are fruit peels, rinds, veggie scraps, eggshells, tea bags, coffee filters, plant trimmings, and shredded paper. If you can help out with that, it would be great. Two thousand nineteen beach badges are now forty-five dollars for adults and thirty-five dollars for students. They're on sale from now until May 24th at the Recreation Department and downstairs at the tax office here. And the city of Long Branch, along with the Chamber of Commerce and Seashore Day Camp, will be hosting an Easter egg hunt on Sunday, April 14th, with a rain date of April 20th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at West End Park. The Chamber, the city, and especially Seashore Day Camp, that's something that they've been doing for the last thirty or thirty-five years. It didn't happen last year, but we're bringing it back this year. And we thank Seashore and the Chamber, Dana from the city, for getting that together. The city of Long Branch also has some employment opportunities, which can be found on our website, www-visitlongbranch.com, under employment. Please visit that page often, as it will be updated frequently. And the Office of the Mayor Facebook page is looking for submissions to highlight volunteers and community members who go above and beyond to help those in Long Branch. If you'd like to recognize an individual or group, please email Lindsay DeAngelis at the city. It's L-D-A-N-G-E-L-I-S, L-D-E-A-N-G-E-L-I-S, at longbranch.org. Or you could just call the administrative office as well. And finally, just a reminder again, the new bulk waste and brush schedule will go into effect March 1st. Our goal for changing this schedule is to have a more efficient EPW department, offering more services to residents, and to have cleaner streets. Go to, again, our website at visitlongbranch.com for more information. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, and thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you. And I, too, would like to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day, and we thank you for taking the time to come out and express your concerns. Have a good evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.